Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. As always, would you please stand for us as the Coffee County Navy Junior ROTC leads us through the pledge in that tonight will be Lieutenant Junior Grade Marino.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the Order of the Agenda.
Second.
It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the 2019 Tax Milage Ordinance Public Hearing and Second Reading and Adoption. Mr. Herr, how are you doing?
Doing good. How are y'all?
Good.
Tonight, we're asking for the second reading of the 2019 Tax Milage Ordinance. Hold a public hearing and present for action. Each year, the City of Douglas is required to set the tax mileage by ordinance as required by state law. A five-year history, the city's property tax digest and levy. And notice, a public hearing on the attached ordinance was published in the Douglas Enterprise, August 22nd, August 29th, 2019 edition. The proposed tax ordinance was read for the first time at the committee meeting on August 26th, 2019. The ordinance should be read for the second time this evening, followed by a public hearing as required by law. Following the public hearing, the ordinance will be ready for your action. Excuse me. This ordinance says the net mileage rate is 7.387 miles for the city and one mile for the industrial authority for a total of 8.387 miles. And now, I want to request that Jerome Adams comes to Podium and reads.
Thank you, Mr. Herr. Good evening.
I'll do the second reading, and then we'll have the public hearing, then you can take action on the tax ordinance. This will be an ordinance the Mayor Board of Commissioners of the City of Douglas, Georgia, proposed for the levying of a taxable property within the City of Douglas, subject to taxation of the laws of the State of Georgia and the ordinance of the City of Douglas for the chart calendar year 2019 and for all purposes said to all provisions thereof. Be it ordained by the Mayor Board of Commissioners of the City of Douglas, Georgia, section assembled as hereby levied aggregation 13.9 miles upon all taxable property, both real and personal within city limits of Douglas, Georgia, subject to taxation. Under the laws of the State of Georgia and the ordinance of the City of Douglas, as reported by the Board of Assessors for remiss taxes in the city and due in legal form levy in proportion as filed to wit. Avalor of Tax Milage Equivalency, 13.9 miles; less sales tax equivalent, mileage 5.5 miles. Total 2019 City of Douglas Tax Mileage, 8.3 miles; less 2019 Industrial Authority Mileage, 1.0 miles. Net City of Douglas 2019 Avalor of Tax Mileage Rate, 7.38 miles. Be it ordained by authority before said that the taxes assessed at here and above the five be collected by the duly elected tax commissioner of Coffee County, who has entered into an agreement with the City of Douglas for collecting the missed taxes only before the first day of December. Duly elected tax commissioner shall keep the records open from the first day of September 2019 until the first day of December 2019, and after such date, the stated elected tax commissioner shall then proceed to issue tax executions for all due unpaid taxes due to the City of Douglas, Georgia for the year 2019. Be it further ordained that the City of Douglas does authorize tax commissioner of the city county to bill and collect 1.0 miles for the Douglas Coffee County Industrial Authority to remit the taxes directed to the Douglas Coffee County Industrial Authority, introduced and read for the first time at the regular meeting of the Mayor Board of Commissioners of the City of Douglas, Georgia on August 26th, 2019, read a second time, and passed and ordained that the regular meeting of the Mayor Board of Commissioners of the City of Douglas, Georgia. That property advertising caption is required on the charter of the City of Douglas, Georgia on September 9th, 2019. That is the second reading. However, at this time, I will call for order a public hearing. If there's anyone here tonight who wishes to make a comment on the 2019 tax ordinance, please come forward, state your name and whatever comments you may have. Apparently, there is no one, Mr. Mayor, so ready for action.
Thank you. At this time, I entertain a motion.
I'll move second.
It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda Items. Mr. Davis, would you please read through those for us?
Yes, Sir Mayor. We have four items coming over on the consent agenda. The first item is the approval of August 26th, 2019 minutes. Second item is item two, approval of the annual football soccer equipment bid, 81219 Parks and Recreation. Third item is item three, the purchase of three 2020 Ram 1500 crew cab trucks for the police department. And item four is approval of the resolution calling for the election for the tax allocation district referendum. Those are the four items on the consent agenda.
At this time, I entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Second.
It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I abstain. I'm not certain as to what the tax allocation district entails because I didn't attend that hearing or that town hall meeting that we had about that, and I haven't had a chance to review it. So, I will abstain on just that item.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, the next thing on the agenda is staff comments. No staff comments?
I don't have any, Mayor.
Next is on the agenda is the Mayor and Commissioner's comments. Mr. Moore said he doesn't have any. Commissioner Pearson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a couple of things that I'd like to say. First of all, I'd like to expound on Mr. Roscoe Allen, who came before us at the work session. And I'd just like to say that, you know, I can understand Mr. Allen's passion. I understand, you know, where he's coming from. He mentioned a couple of items. He mentioned one where he didn't get reimbursed for developing Alderman Subdivision, which is a subdivision behind where I live. There was a incentive program in place, and we can't find documentation that says it was actually done away with, and he feels that he is entitled to those approximately forty-something thousand dollars. So, I can understand his passion, and I thank him for coming forward, letting us know, you know, his concerns. He also mentioned the issue with Mr. Brandon Paul. I haven't met the young lady who was hired after Mr. Paul. Since Mr. Paul left, I haven't met the young lady yet. That is my department. I will try to get Ms. Henderson so I can meet the young lady. I wasn't aware of what she was making. I don't know if Mr. Paul was making that amount or not, but anyway, I'd just like to say that I can definitely understand his concerns. And as I've said before, well, before I say what I've said before, I want to say that this past weekend, we had a mediator here in Douglas, Georgia, Minister Denise Freeman. She attended one of our city council meetings before, and she works with the Board of Education on the board in Lexington County, and she does mediator. And she came forward to try to get some issues resolved in our community because she sees where Douglas now has posted things about various persons. She saw where Douglas now posted about, or whatever, said about, I was unopposed in the election, and then all of a sudden, after he posted that, the next day or so, it was somebody went and qualified to do a write-in, passed the qualifying date. So, it seems as though Douglas now is manipulating and controlling Districts 1, 2, and 3. And it's sad. He expresses more concern about Districts 1, 2, and 3 than he has about 4, 5, and 6. And it's just, it's really sad that sometimes you have people who allow other people to manipulate them and think for them. So, I'd just like to say to the citizens of Douglas, be very, very careful. I'm saying that again. Be very, very careful who you choose to vote for. Learn to think for yourself. Don't allow anybody else to think for you, or manipulate you, or tell you if somebody needs to be opposed or not. You know a person if they've been doing a good job in your community or not. Think for yourself, and stop being manipulated, and stop being a puppet. And also, I'd like to also speak on very briefly the incident about the, up at the shopping center, not shopping center, but Little Mike's Restaurant. Mr. Michael Clark got in touch with me and told me that that's his property, and that his daughter does not own that, and she had no reason to tell the police department that I could not come up there. But some of my constituents asked me about that, so that's why I want to talk on that. If you read the paper, you'll see that there were no threats made, there were no assaults made. The lady stated that we argued. I didn't even consider it an argument. I considered it a discussion. We had a discussion on a couple of items, and we disagreed on those items. But no cursing, no threatening, none of that. But she called me that Sunday morning, and she said to me, "Ms. Olivia, I'm sorry that I had to involve the police with that." She said, "'Cause it really was not warranted." She said, "I overreacted." So, but to the citizens of District 3, I'd just let you know, I did not give a comment to the newspaper. The newspaper did not contact me. Robert Preston contacted me, but it seems like he's always trying to contact me when there's something negative going on. He's never contacted me when there's something positive, when I've gotten the highest award to be awarded to a political official. He's never contacted me when I was honored as a, in Florida, for that award. So, I didn't respond to him, but the newspaper did not give me an opportunity to respond. And I'm not sure if I would have responded to them either because of the fact that I wanted to say what I had to say while sitting here in this seat where I represent all the people of District 3. I think that's all that I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pearson. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to reiterate on some of the things that went on, to thank God that he bypassed Coffee County again with the hurricane that was going on all over between South Carolina and Florida, the Bahamas and all. Thank God we didn't have to experience none of that. Want to give a thanks to the Red Cross for what they did as far as getting prepared to set up for the ones that had to evaporate from their homes and things. Mr. Neil Smith, I think I got that name right, for the great job that they'd done to prepare for the people if they had to come, you know. Also, the event downtown, although I went to the football game, but after I came from the football game, me and my sister dropped by, and I mean, somebody had it going on. They had it going on downtown. It was a great, great turnout, you know. Last but least, I just want to thank the employees of the City of Douglas for doing what y'all do for the City of Douglas, because without you all, we wouldn't be the city that we are now. And from Commissioner Taylor, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for what you all do to make us look the way we look, and I say thank you very much. That's all.
Mr. Mayor, pro chap.
Good evening. Also, I echo Mr. Taylor's words that, you know, we sure dodged a bullet. Again, very thankful that we didn't have any negative effects from the storm, and I hope that we're all keeping the people of the Bahamas in our thoughts and prayers. The devastation is very hard to comprehend. In 1992, if y'all recall, there was a category five that hit Homestead down in South Florida, and I had a chance to go down there and help clean up, and it was, after seeing all that back then, I knew it was going to be bad when I heard the news reports about the hurricane, and it's that bad. So, I hope that everybody's taking the opportunity to get online and make some donations, get with your, you know, the charitable organization that you think would be able to meet the needs, and let's get some, do what we can. Unfortunately, you know, it's going to be very hard for anybody to get over there due to the island location, but we can send our money and certainly our prayers. I want to, well, also want to thank all those who got organized and did the Gopher Tortoise Festival and talking to some of the businesses downtown. I know that we had, it accomplished one of the things, which was to help bring people together and bring them downtown to get around some of our local businesses and enjoy themselves, and I think that was accomplished. Even with having, you know, the big football game Friday night, the businesses, some of those were really busy on Friday, so congratulations to everyone who made that a success. And I want to thank my fellow commissioners and the mayor for the work that we've been able to do and accomplish here. I know that there are times that we may disagree, but I know that I respect everyone's position. And, you know, even Ms. Pearson, sometimes, you know, we don't always agree on some of the issues, but I certainly respect the passion that she brings to this job. You know, I think we all, and each of us in our own way, we have that drive, and I'm proud of what we've been able to accomplish and what we're continuing to work on. You know, everybody's got diverse experiences and points of view, you know, but when we bring those together, we're able to talk about that, and because of our differences, we're able to get more information about different things, and it helps us, I think, make better choices on what we ultimately do. So, I'm thankful for all y'all, mostly thankful for our employees. They also bring that same thing, drive to the table, and their unique experiences as well. And when we put it together and move forth for the citizens of Douglas, we accomplish great things, and I'm looking forward to continuing to do so. I'll let Commissioner McNeil talk more about this, but we are planning on having a chat and chew for Wars 4 and 5, and we'd like to, we'll get more details out there to y'all about this, but I want to encourage everybody out there to get informed about the issues that affect our community. And then one of the things that I get a lot of questions about right now, and we've talked about it again tonight, is tax allocation district, the idea. I sense a lot of excitement. Seems like every person that brings it up to me that I talk to about it is really excited about the idea of having a Chick-fil-A in the City of Douglas. You know, it's a very popular franchise, popular restaurant. I think they've been voted the number-one fast food restaurant in several surveys. So, I think that's a neat opportunity that we have, and remember, that will be coming up to a vote, and if you have any questions, please contact us. Please contact the city. We've got people that can answer your questions. They're posting information on the website, so, you know, no need to be, you know, have questions unanswered. And we look forward to getting out there and having discussions on these topics. Another thing that was brought up, please. Now's the time, as we get up for the election, people have been having questions about, you know, well, who's my representative? Where do I live? Go to the City of Douglas website, you can look at the ward maps. They're posted. We have six of them, six wars, you know, in the city limits, and you can see exactly where, based on where you live, who represents you. And, you know, be able to contact that person and decide what you want to do as things, you know, with these issues, and get your questions answered. But that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to also say thank you to the staff of the Salvation Army and to the volunteers. Was able to visit with them on several occasions, and we had volunteers here from several states, and I was so impressed with these people who take time out of their busy schedules, who come and who donate their time, and it was just a great effort. There were a lot of unknowns, and I know a lot of people felt like things were sort of drug out, or maybe went on for, you know, a longer period of time, but thank heavens, you know, we were prepared for the worst and experienced the best, in my opinion. So, we were thankful. Again, like Mike says, we want to give to our churches, to our charitable organizations to help the people we can, anywhere we can. But on a lighter note, I think the Trojans did a great job Friday night, Mayor, and I'm proud of your Trojans, our Trojans, went to that game, my family and I. And we also attended First Friday, the First Friday. You know, there was so much going on downtown this weekend with the festival. We had the Chambers Gopher Tortoise Festival, and so we had to space it out. We had something Friday night, or Friday afternoon, Friday night, and Saturday morning. And Saturday morning was a great, I think, very well-attended. A lot of folks from out of town drew a good crowd, and so we'll look for that to be a hit again next year. I'm going to say, you know, as I visit with and talk to people, not only in my ward, but people from all over the community, I get a lot of feedback, an awful lot of feedback, and a lot of questions, you know, "How do y'all do what you do? Why do you do what you do?" You know, it's almost like a volunteer effort. And a lot of these folks, you know, they stress to me that they may not enjoy the drama part of it, or the, some of the inflection of passion in some regards. Some of us like to do things more so behind the scenes. As far as the city commissioner, we like to get things done, and we like to work together with staff, commending staff on what they do, and building them up instead of trying to tear things apart. But, you know, people in the community, I think, want to hear from those of us who have solutions, and those of us that are willing to work behind the scenes. And, you know, we appreciate our cameras, and we realize, you know, we're in a different age and time than commissioners might have been years ago when everyone first started. You know, to have two or three cameras in your face can be intimidating, but I'm the same person on and off camera. I don't, you know, I'm a little quieter probably than most up here and a little more shy, but I want to say thank you, and thank you to the staff that y'all make this job a lot easier than some might say. But Commissioner Gowen's right, and he and I are going to be doing something called a chat and chew. I think Ward 2 and 3 did y'all's together, is that right?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, they went together and did theirs, so we're going to do ours together, too. Hope for a good turnout there. The city will be getting invitations out. We'll be coming up with a date for that real soon. And what we want to do, Mike and I have talked about this, what we want to recruit and encourage, you've all heard of the junk-free days, okay? We've got that going. It's up and good. People ask about it. They participate in it. We also want some neighborhood cleanup days. I want to see some days when neighborhoods are getting together and going around in a circle of five or six houses. Find the elderly person in your neighborhood, help them out, mow their grass, do something. And we want to, I want to build a campaign of some sort where we catch people doing good things for their neighbors. Visiting with them, they say, you know, it's so easy to find fault when people move off and leave junk or leave things. Let's help one time, just one time, clean it up and show people that that's not what we want in our neighborhoods, and that's not what we're going to accept and tolerate. But, Mayor, I just want to say thank you for all you do and for encouraging us and for, you know, the good stuff that we are getting done up here. So, I think folks can appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I said we're going to try to get out here by 7:30. I'm going to try to do it in five minutes. One of the things that I've been thinking about over the last few days is when it counts. I had a Vietnam vet tell me something a long time ago. When it don't count, it's pretty easy. It's pretty easy. You can go out there and kick a field goal all day in practice. Kick a field goal all day in practice, but when the game's on the line and it's 55 yards away, when it counts, how do you feel then? And so many times, when it counts, people tend to shy away from those challenges. And right now, we're thinking about the Tykes Allocation District. The City of Douglas, this is when it counts. This is when it counts. Going to the polls and expressing how you feel about the opportunity to have a Chick-fil-A, a Marshalls, a Cookout, a Starbucks, and a Hobby Lobby, all going on at the same time. This is when it counts. This is when it counts. So, we have to get out, we have to support this, and give us the best opportunity to grow our retail market. Now, the citizens of Douglas is going to tell the mayor and commission what they're going to say, yea or nay. It still has to go before the Board of Education, and it also has to go before the county commissioners, and they have to vote to say yea or nay at the conclusion that we'll form a TAD committee or board that actually serves, excuse me, as a liaison as far as the funds and stuff like that. I'm excited about that. When it counts, City of Douglas, make sure that we're there. The next thing is, want to talk about the hurricane, because again, when it counts, the City of Douglas is there. They are there for individuals that are in our county, that live in mobile home parks, that want to have a sense of security. Red Cross allows us to open up the shelter, but what I want to talk to you about is out there at the Emergency Operations Center. When I first became the mayor, I mean, it'd be a handful of people in that room. Over the years, we've had the opportunity to grow that base. Now, it's just not law enforcement or the county and the city staff there. Now, you have members from the religious community, civic organizations, industries, business owners, the EDA, the Chamber of Commerce, everybody getting that fresh information at the same time so they can go back and make informed decisions about, hey, we need to keep the building open, or keep the business open or not. And when it counts, I was talking to some individuals over at the shelter, and they said, you know, "We used to have a big debate about where we're going when we get evacuated. Say, the last couple of years that we've been evacuated, there's no discussion. We know that we're going to Douglas, Georgia. We know that the hospitality there doesn't compare to any other shelter that we've been in." So, that goes to the leadership of this community. That goes to us erasing the boundaries, letting the civic organizations come in and prepare the food, serve the food, putting up cots, doing all, it takes a Herculean effort to keep that open. I'm not going to sit here and try to name individual organizations or individuals that do this. When it counts, when it counts, Coffee County is there. We are there, and we are unified, and that's the only way that, when it counts, it can be successful. Friday night, my mighty Trojans took the field, had the opportunity to have a field pass down there. Woo! I was excited one minute, and man, that guy ran that touchdown back. Oh, Lord, I said, "Lord, it's going to be a long night." But them young men said, "Mayor, we got you. Trophy's not going anywhere." I was like, "Lord, that's Gold Board say, 'Sub, sub.'" That's what that's Gold Board say. So, it was a hard, hard fought battle. And when it counts, the young man from Ware County broke on us, and there was a Coffee High Trojan out there that summoned him that says, "When it counts, I'm not going to quit." And he ran that young man down, and I think he tackled him at the one-yard line. The one-yard line. Our defense went out there and said, "When it counts, you can't have that yard." Fans were up yelling and screaming. The mayor was over there praying and hoping that God was a Trojan fan, because woo, it was tight over there. It was tight, I'm telling you. And when we held the, oh, man, I had absolute jubilation because I had ran so much of dumping down the sidelines. I felt like I had about 17 tackles, three interceptions. It was rough on me. I'm glad I'm only on the sideline one game. And the sweetest thing was, it was awful quiet in my office today. Nobody want to talk about that football game. So, I want to say this right here. The City of Douglas called me crazy. It's okay. I believe in you. You have convinced me that this is a You have convinced me that this is a great city. You have convinced me that this is a great community. You have convinced me that our law enforcement, the sheriff, our civic organizations, our churches, our industries, our businesses, when it counts, we stand together, and that's where we need to be. My last comment is this right here. We all have a choice in life. We all have a choice in life to do of good or to do of evil. We have this Bible that says, "In the end, it is our belief that good is going to triumph the evils of the world." As I've said before, in order for evil to prevail, it's for good men to do nothing. The city of Douglas, when it counts, the good men have stood up, coupled with those good women, those good children. This is a great community. It's an honor and a privilege to serve here. So with that being said, go Trojans, love those guys. That's three straight. At this time, I entertain a motion, and we can get up out of here. It's been motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good deal. Let's get out of here.
Mayor, I know you-